For our pledge, at this time, I'd like to introduce Patrick Williams. Army veteran, served October of 1959 to, excuse me, October 1959 to October 1962. Rising to the rank as Specialist Fourth Class. He has earned numerous awards throughout his military career. He is retired from Colts and currently is a Clark Summit Council member. Patrick, thank you for your service and thank you for being here and thank you for all that you do for the community. Thank you.
Commissioner. All right. If everyone would put their right hand over their heart, veterans may hand salute and please follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a moment of silence. We have, Collin Township Police Department, Ohio. Police Officer Dale Wood succumbed to his injuries sustained three days earlier while moving traffic control device. He was hit by a car and killed. Pravo Police Department, Utah. Master Police Officer Joseph Shiner was shot and killed in Utah while attempting to arrest a wanted fugitive. Henry County Police Department, Georgia. Police Officer Michael Smith succumbed to a gunshot ruins sustained December 6th of 2018 while struggling with a suspect in a dentist office. Newman Police Department, California. Corporal Renell Singh was shot and killed while conducting a vehicle stop. Please keep our law enforcement officers, all of our servicemen and women, and all of our people that protect us and our country, and our thoughts and prayers, and please keep our law enforcement officers that just lost their lives and their families and friends, and their thoughts and prayers. They are our first line of defense. Please keep them in their thoughts and prayers. I'd like to bring this January 9, 2019 Board of Commissioners a meeting to order in the Commissioners' Conference Room, 10:00 AM, at the Lackawanna County Government Center at the Globe. So it's been a great couple of days. I'd like to make a motion for our minutes. Do I have a second? Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only. Anyone? Okay. Before we get into the proclamation presentation, I'd just like to say that, and I'll open this up to the board, it's been a, it's been quite a three years to get to this point and I'm just very, very happy to be here today. This is an incredible moment. This is our first official Commissioners' Meeting in the Government Center. It's a great building. It was left since diversified, moved up to JCPenney's and moved some of their other business out of town and there was nobody that was really looking at it. All of the developers weren't looking at it for apartments because it didn't have windows all the way around it because everybody wants a window. And it was sitting for years. And I'd like to just thank our staff and everyone who helped out with this project. This was a one-man project. It took two people to get the vote to start it, but it took a lot of people to put it together and make it happen. I'd just like to thank all of them, especially our maintenance, our administration, Cadden Brothers movers for doing a great job thus far. We still have some stuff still being moved over the next couple of weeks and some other departments being moved around, but this has been a great three days and the ribbon cutting yesterday was second to none in our reception area where we're going to have. It's, I mean, as much as this is a government center, this is going to be a building that's going to be utilized by the citizens all the time. We'll have blood drives, artwork, you name it, all kinds of stuff, First Friday events downstairs. We've got a lot of space and it's just been really, really great. And since we've taken this building over since August of 2016, we've reintroduced it back into the community with the name Globe involved, whether it was the Christmas market and then we put it out in the streets this year and we'll have it there next year and all the different events that we've had in this building leading up until we started the construction phase and it still didn't hold us back. We still had a great Christmas event outside and we used the old men's department and we had free pictures there for the kids with Santa Claus so they can also say that their children had pictures at the Globe with Santa. And we'll be doing that in our reception area downstairs this year. It's been such a great, great three days and I really, I can't believe that we're even sitting here in our Commissioners' Conference Room, but we are. And I'm just very happy with, and I'd like to thank everyone who came out yesterday. I appreciate everyone that came. Commissioner Cummings?
Yes, it was a very nice day yesterday. We had a lot of people show up and, you know, of course, I've been waiting for this. I thought we'd be here in September, but I'm glad to be here now. So, you know, yesterday was a historic day for our county and in many, many ways. What we saw was, as I call it, a bipartisan effort by a conservative and that has been allowed to have a vote in something major in our county and that would be myself. You know, what they can't seem to get done out at the federal government, we've accomplished here in Lackawanna County. So I thank Commissioner O'Malley for allowing me to be a part of that and for his vision. I campaigned, he campaigned, I'm sure Jerry campaigned, although I'm not positive on, you know, consolidation or conservative or just saving taxpayers' money. In one way or another, we've all looked at it to save the taxpayers and do everything that we could to help them out. And when, when I was campaigning, I never in my wildest dreams thought I'd be able to get a complete consolidation and have a vote to make that happen. And I did. The Globe Store was the dream of Commissioner O'Malley. That was the compromise in that vote because I would have had it in Old Forge, you know. So, you know, this is the compromise building, the, you know, nonpartisan vote, you know, that we had here and that's the way we've been working. And we've been working for the betterment of the taxpayer, not for any other reason. And that's, that's what makes this administration so, so good and makes it work so well. And, you know, I am very proud to be a part of that, very proud. You know, it's one of my highest achievements in my life and I just am grateful for that opportunity. And as the Globe used to say, Fran, right? You could shop all around the globe and never leave Scranton. Go all around the county and never leave Scranton.
Absolutely.
You know, and that's, that's what the vision that Commissioner O'Malley saw prior to me coming into this administration and, you know, we made it happen and very proud and blessed and as I always do, I give all my, all the glory to God, not me. And I just appreciate the opportunity and thank you for the time to discuss it.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Well, it's a beautiful conference room and let's get on with the meeting.
I'd like to show the front page of the, or the six page of the paper today. It actually has the timeline and stuff on the inception of the Globe Store and actually we have the picture of the individual who, who built the Globe Store, the story downstairs. And it basically shows the layout from top to bottom, from the Commissioners down to the first floor. So, so anybody, please make sure you can look at the paper or look at the Times website and you'll get a good eye outlook on what it's going to be. And we're going to, in the future, we're going to give options, probably on First Friday when it gets warmer, for people to actually tour the Globe. And, and right now, just so people know, you know, there's bugs. You know, I mean, it's a new building. We've got a lot of work still going on as we're moving in, so it's, it's really coming along and we're very, very happy at this point. Okay. At this time, I'd like to bring up Bill Browning from CYS. Bill, talk to us a little bit about your award that you received in the paper. We saw it on the, he was on the name droppers a few weeks ago and I think that Bill does a great job in his department, you know, making sure that everybody's safe.
Oh, well, thank you, Commissioners. It was a distinguished service award. There are two other recipients, Commissioner Avantek of the State, of the State Police and Federal Prosecutor Michelle Oshewski. And it's an award given to individuals that have, I guess, as accomplished various things in the field of child welfare. I was just fortunate enough that when I came to this county, I was given kind of free rein to change some things. So the award actually, I think, belongs to the staff members. They're the people that, that make me look good. They've done an excellent job. They tirelessly have carried out some things that, that other counties have never been able to accomplish and we continue to do it every day and we've done it at the same budget since 2005 where other counties are increasing. Our neighboring counties spend about twice as much delivering less service than we do and it's because of the tireless efforts of our staff. And I just want people to understand what our staff in general, what kind of decisions. There are two decisions that they have to make, whether the child could remain in the home or not remain in the home. And there are people in the community that will say, well, just take them out and ask questions later, but we've learned in child welfare that that damages families irreparably. The state coming in, it totally devastates the child, devastates the family if we do it wrong. If we, if we don't do it, the child could wind up dead. So I just, I want people to understand that these, and a lot of them are fresh from college are making these decisions, not just once or twice. They may have 100 kids on their caseload and they're making those decisions daily, going home and saying, did I make the right decision in leaving the child home or did I make the right decision to take that, that child out? So, so I think whenever I get any kind of a accolade, it really does belong to the staff.
It's, it's so serious and like you said, I think a lot of the workers are the angels because, you know, protecting our children and then our area aging the elderly, but I just want to thank you and your staff and I was very happy to see you, name droppers. I know you work very hard and your budget's always very good to go and you're making sure that, you know, I mean, we're doing so much more with, you know, the amount that we have for your budget. So just thank you for everything you're doing and thank your staff.
And I will. And I thank you for your support.
And I want to tell you something. They, they do great work all the time, but they have Adoption Day, which is one of the greatest things in this world, to see them actually approving families to be full families and stuff. It's amazing. They do it a couple of times a year and it's just so nice and their staff, they dress up as like for the Wizard of Oz and different costumes and there's food and it's a big celebration, celebration of somebody becoming a family. It's really, really great. And I try to make it dominant all the time and I know that my fellow Commissioners do too, but just, just great, everything. And that's just one of the highlights. I'm not talking about just that child that shouldn't be there and is saved somewhere else and so much more, so much more.
And they do, they put it out there all into, and like you said, they dress up this year, they said they were going to try to do Harry Potter. They unanimously said that they're going to have me go as Voldemort, which I don't know. I don't know if that works into the theme very well, but...
We will see. Commissioner Cummings?
Well, congratulations and good job and please tell your staff that I said congratulations to them as well.
I will, Commissioner. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
You've, great job, Bill. You're a state model across all of the Commonwealth. You have filled your positions with a great young guy in area agents on aging along with your children and youth and just keep up the good work. How long have you been working here, Bill?
Since 2005.
2005. Okay. Well, hopefully it'll last another 20 years.
We'll see.
And he's also...
That's at your pleasure.
He's homegrown. He's a graduate of Riverside High School and he came back, he had his education, he came back. He actually worked in the city and he came back and worked in our children's unit services. So he actually has a real good background before he actually ascended to his position here. So, thank you. Thank you, Bill, for everything and tell your staff, thank you again for everything they do. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you again.
19-007 Small Business Spotlight.
We have Tom Gruetus Optical and the Bear Accessories. Tom Gruetus and his daughter Stephanie Gruetus Wisner?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks for inviting us.
Welcome to the Government Center.
Yes.
It's beautiful.
Tell us about your business.
Tom Gruetus Optical. We make and sell eyeglasses. And if you look around and see some of the better glasses that fit people's personalities, you'll know where they came from.
What about Mr. Fredrickson's glasses? How are they? Are they okay?
There you go, right? Right?
And Jerry?
I can attest that they fit one.
And anyone else that's interested in looking well? Bob? Yeah?
Jesus, my God. We could start the commercial right now.
Been in business since 1980.
Downtown.
Don't tell anybody, you know, that. Keep that out of the paper, the 1980, so a few years ago. But it's fine and met a lot of nice people, Scrantonians, and really enjoy being downtown. Stephanie joined Tom Gruetus Optical a few years ago. She doesn't want me to say, but if you really want a little consultation on what you should be wearing eyeglass-wise, come and see Stephanie.
So who started, you started it, sir?
I did. Tom, yes.
And what, what made you decide to?
Well, actually, I worked in the business before and for various reasons thought that I should be doing something on my own. So I, yes, but I, I worked in the business a few years before that, quite a few.
Yeah, well, that's the same as myself. I'm a nurse and I worked for other companies and then I felt that I could run it better than they could, so I figured, well, I can open my own and I could do it better and I did. And, and that's what, you know, I try to highlight as well, is people that, you know, see the job, see how, what opportunities they think they can provide at a better service and they go off on their own and, and, you know, the beat goes on and we have...
Very good, yes, it does.
Now we have your, your daughter and family is going to continue your legacy and, you know, employee people here in our area, you're staying in our county and you're providing a service that, that is needed and necessary and you're doing it with a great reputation. You've been in business for, for many, many years, that proves that and we're so proud to have you here. So thank you for being an inspiration.
It goes the other way. Thanks for inviting. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, well, you...
Got this opportunity, yes.
You are an inspiration, obviously, to your daughter because she's taking the steps to stay involved in, in the family business, which is now a family business.
Yes.
Congratulations on that.
Thank you.
A lot of kids don't want to follow in their, in their parents' footsteps and...
They don't want to work with their fathers.
That's right. So, you know, so the love is there, I see it and, you know, it's, it's just an honor to have you here and...
Thank you for inviting us, really.
Thank you for all of your hard work and congratulations. I hope to see you many, many years, handing it down from generation to generation.
Absolutely.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
I'm a longtime customer of Tom Gruetus and Company and I can attest that my current pair of glasses would have nothing to do with Tom Gruetus or myself. It was done by my wife, Ann Stephanie. And a little help from our daughter via Philadelphia on iPhones. But yeah, it's, the woman's touch actually makes a big difference down there, Tom.
There's no question.
And Tom is the, the, maybe the greeter, but Stephanie is the worker.
Right.
You know, you're the nail in the head.
It's a wonderful place. It's very comfortable to shop. I'm not a great shopper and I couldn't be happier when I have to go in there and it's just a nice place. And if there's ever an issue, they handle it immediately and they do a great job down there. I recommend it to anyone in the area.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Jerry.
Appreciate the good work, yeah.
Thank you.
Stephanie, Tom, I'd just like to congratulate your second generation. It seems like you're the one that's bringing the pizzazz to the business. You're the pizzazz person. No, this, this really matters and like you said, you're, you're working with your dad, you know, and there's, I think we, if you can, if, sometimes family business is tough, but you seem to get along really well, you know, and my family, actually, we're a third generation that's going to be going in their family business and it's, it's amazing to me because, you know, I mean, it's, it's your business, it's your life, it's your blood, it's your sweat, it's your tears, it's your everything.
True.
And I'd like to just thank you if you've been in downtown Scranton for 39 years and your daughter's only been involved since she's 21, so that's the last three years, right? So, but...
Uh huh. We won't tell.
But, you know, it's, it's like the point of going to a haircut or you just, when you go and get a new pair of glasses and I see my son, my son gets, he's been wearing glasses since first grade, that he just, his expression just changes with a new pair of glasses.
Personality.
It's just a different outlook, yeah. And first it was us choosing them and then the last several years it's been us and him choosing them and now it's him choosing them because he's 17 years old and he's between contacts and sometimes wears glasses, but I'd like to thank you for everything you're doing.
Very good.
And I know when someone walks in your doors, that they can feel the love and the caring and these individuals that are coming to your, to your, to your building are, are family to you. And they, they can feel that. And they're bringing their children and grandchildren, everybody back because of what you do and what your daughter does, so.
Thank you.
Phone number, what's the phone number? Somebody wants to call.
Oh, 570-346-1771.
Facebook, website, anything? What do we got?
Yes, sure. Tom Gruetus Optical and the Bear Accessories.
Beautiful.
Very good.
Okay. Commissioner Cummings?
Thank you again.
Congratulations.
We have a certificate of recognition. The County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Tom Gruetus Optical and the Bear Accessories in honor of achieving the designation of a small business spotlight in Lackawanna County, given this ninth day of January 2019 by Commissioner Patrick O'Malley, Commissioner Jerry O'Terriani, and myself, Commissioner Cummings. Come on up.
Lots of room now, right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Congratulations.
True, true.
Right in the middle there. This is yours. All right, thank you.
Commissioner, one more bottle, too.
Should have a little bit.
Here we go. Everybody look at me and smile. Take a couple of them. Let me take one more without the flash here. That's good, it popped up on me. Do it again. Good, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it. Oh, great. All right, that works. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. See you, Tom.
Yeah, lots of room.
Nobody trips over there.
No, no one's going to. Literally. Okay. But that, isn't that a nice, really, thing about a second-generation business in the community? It's going to go on for decades to go, so, and hopefully another generation beyond that. So, congratulations, guys. Thank you very much for coming in. 19-005 Approving Current Payables.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is a resolution approving the current payables. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County General Fund, numbers from 274400 through 274769 inclusive totaling And electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling $2,965,083.91.
Controller DeBilio, how are we?
All payables are in order, Commissioners, and they've been audited and approved. There is one invoice included in today's list that is for Myers-Breyer &amp; Kelly, which is related to the Attorney General's prison probe for $65,186.26. And we're holding that until you approve it today.
Okay. Okay. Does the Board have any questions for Mr. DeBilio? I'd like to make a motion approving current payables. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings? Yes.
Yes. 19-006?
Thank you, Commissioners. This is a resolution entering into an agreement to purchase property. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into the agreement with Robert and Karen Pollak to purchase the property located at 321 Lackawanna Avenue, Scranton, for the amount of $192,000. Commissioner, this is a former community bake shop property over here on Lackawanna Avenue, which we are acquiring for purposes of increasing parking for the county and the administration. We did have an appraisal of the property done. The appraisal from Canton Realty came in at $210,000, which is about $18,000 over what we're paying for it. And the county assessment value places the property value at about $200,000. So again, that's $8,000 over what we're paying for the property, so.
Okay. Does the Board have any questions for Mr. Fredrickson? Okay, I'd like to make a motion entering an agreement to purchase property. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. 19-008?
Thank you, Commissioners. This is a resolution entering into a restaurant concession lease agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a restaurant concession lease agreement to commence March 1, 2019 with Gino Majewski to operate the Charlemont Restaurant within the Lackawanna County Government Center. Again, this is a three-year lease for the, for the restaurant concession on the first floor. It's going to be called the Charlemont, which we own the rights to the name. They're going to lease that from us for a dollar for the next three years so they can use that for the restaurant. This was done through an RFP process. It was put out for a bid twice. We received only one concession back. We did go back and negotiate with them and he's going to pay us $1,500 a month for the next three years for the purposes of running the restaurant.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion entering into a restaurant concession lease agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
On the question, I just wanted to just bring up that, you know, we wanted to make sure that the Globe had, we wanted to bring the Charlemont back and the Charlemont, we couldn't actually do it because the courts are out the back end of the facility. We would have liked to put it right in the blueprints there, but we weren't able to. This is towards the front, it's on Wyoming Avenue. Just trying to bring back that, the restaurant name and just a little bit of that, that Globe feeling and I just think it's a great idea and we're going to be going through it step by step over the next couple of months until the grand opening of the facilities, of the restaurants. So I'd just like to thank everyone involved because this, I think, is, this is a real plus and like you said, Donnie looked into actually who controlled and owned the name and now we have it, so thank you, Attorney Fredrickson.
You're welcome.
I mean, Chief of Staff Fredrickson. Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Morning.
Bob Ballis, Scranton. It's nice to see the new digs here. And it's like standing before the Supreme Court here with the new operation.
I think.
You've done a great job on doing what you did here.
Thank you.
And I hope more people attend here and voice their opinions to kind of help the Commissioners and everybody else move this county forward in a more positive direction by putting in their own input instead of sending back quarterbacking from the bleachers, come out on the playing field. It was great to see Tom Gruetus here and Stephanie. I've been with Tom, I can't even think how many years that he's been there and never once had an issue, never once had a problem and if you did, it was immediately addressed and taken care of. And they were always available. If you broke your glasses, you had no problem picking up the phone, even come in special and take care of them. So it was great to see a well-deserving award given to both of them. Going on a little more here. The parking, we have to figure out a solution. If you want more people to come here, first of all, the parking garage next door where I pulled in there is a joke. It's leaking, you can't, you gotta walk, the elevator doesn't work, you're up and down the steps, you know, you gotta address the situation with them. The other thing that I think you can do is get with the parking authority and maybe for the period of the meetings, hand out a voucher that if you park on Wyoming Avenue here, you don't get a ticket. It's the only way I think you're going to get more and more people here until you get a better parking operation going on down here. Watching the city council at the meeting the other day, they're getting on the ethics about this, that, and the other. Hopefully, they'll take their own direction and abide by their own ethics that they want to put on on other people, that they're the ones that should really pay attention to what's ethical and what isn't, and what should be about the people, and not about themselves, and kind of equalize what's going on here with our nonprofits. The university put up $200,000 when they should be putting up 12 or 13 million. And pull our county and our city out of the hole where it's got to be. I would like the council and the Commissioners to attend the Scranton School Board meetings. We need to put the hammer down on those people. They're just like a rampant-out-of-control herd of cattle running down the road. And we got to put a stop to what they're doing, because they're affecting and impacting every citizen in this city, especially our elderly, who could just about make ends meet. And they're making your job harder and harder for every one of us that live in this community doing what they're doing. You know, they got to be held accountable. Just because they're teachers doesn't make them gods. They got to dance to the tune we all have to. And we all work 365 days a year. Remember, they only work 180-some. So you can't give more for doing less. The auction I had was a great success. We had one, we got several more coming up till we're done liquidating and moving everything out of here. And it wasn't a great feeling to see a lot of stuff go that we spent years building and developing, but because of the actions of Kolodjeski and Joyce, we were forced into it. It's not something that we wanted to do. Which brings up my issue again, that Joyce either wears one hat or no hat at all. But it's a major conflict of interest having Joe Joyce being the tax collector and the solicitor for the tax collector. You got to do one or the other, and you guys are the one with the power to do it. But you got a major conflict of interest, and you're opening yourself up to a lot of litigation. You can't have what he's doing to continue to go on. What they did to me, they've done to a lot of others. And what they did wasn't legal, putting a judgment on me personally for real estate taxes. They were told by the Commissioners, they can't do it, and they went ahead and did it. That's what creates problems here. When we get people who step outside the boundary, thinking they're gods themselves, they could do whatever the hell they want to do. And we're suffering the consequences of what they're doing. We'll suffice. They definitely aren't going to be winners when this is all over with, I can assure you of that. They're going to be held accountable for what they did and the reasons they did it for, which will come out in the future. I had one property that we do have for sale that I'd like to hand out to the Commissioners and discuss it with is the old sports dome that we had up in Jessup. There's 80,000 square foot of playing field there, the building and all, that the county might be interested in doing something with us on it for an athletic field. A lot of the people in this county, the schools and stuff, have nowhere to go, other than maybe with the university once in a while or other places. But it's a magnificent property. I was going to rebuild it, but because of the issues that have gone on, I have no intentions of investing anymore in the county. But it might be something you would consider, or have people on the outside that would consider doing something that would be for the betterment of the kids here. The Holy Cross Hall and the Holy Cross Church that I have, because of the taxes, I paid $35,000. I owe 50 grand in taxes on it already. We're putting bids out for demolition. I'm going to demolish the church and the hall. There's no sense keeping it and go through what we're doing, spending thousands of dollars in legal fees, and this unjust taxation that was put on it is an absurdity. And breaks my heart to see something like that get done. I bought it to preserve our culture. But I can't continue to spend my time and energy battling in courtrooms over the taxation that was put on by this county. So we're putting bids out to have them both demolished. And since I've owned that property, the kids have played free there. All they've paid is their utilities. So there's a lot of consequences and a lot of things that are happening, thanks to Kolodjeski and Joyce. And it's a domino effect. Our dinner that we had for Christmas, the 2050 year I've done it, was a tremendous, tremendous success. I couldn't ask for anything better than to see all the people that came and enjoyed Christmas Day and learned the real meaning of what it means to say Merry Christmas. It was just awesome. We delivered over 600 meals to people that couldn't get there. Plus, we picked them up, and we had close to 3,000 people or better that showed up there for dinner. So it just shows the need in this county for camaraderie. And that's what we've always were in the city of Scranton. When you lived in a neighborhood years ago, whether you were Italian, Polish, German, Syrian, whatever, everybody all joined in together to do things that you don't see anymore. The word "family" is becoming a very difficult term in this area anymore. And that dinner was about family. And I'm happy I was able to do what I could do and still hold that dinner, and I'll still continue it, no matter what part of the world I'm in. Christmas Day, I will be in Scranton, Pennsylvania, hosting my dinner. And the last thing is, I'm sure we all saw everything going on last night with the President addressing our borders and addressing our issues. We have issues right here in Scranton. Just drive around and you'll see them. And Pat, vets like ourselves that put uniforms on to defend this country, we need to take a stand and protect our country. If you want to be here, come here illegal. There's a doorway for you to get here, but don't come here thinking that you're going to be illegal and get advantages and benefits you're not entitled to. You know, respect is earned, not demanded. And that's what these people are doing. They're demanding, we respect them. It's unfortunate two children died that came into there, but it's more unfortunate that our kids in the United States that are actual Americans are starving, are dying, are being abused, and we do nothing about it. We're only worried about two other kids. And that's unfortunate. Our law enforcement is putting themselves at high risk, because we have people in our government that think it's a damn joke to have people stand in harm's way while they sit there and badger and knock down when they already voted in the past to protect this country by a border wall or whatever means we need it. We have a President. We've elected him President, and we need to respect the man for what he's attempting to do in this office. I am a strong supporter of President Trump, as many other people are. I may be a little more openly, because I've been all over the country with him and for him with our trucking operations. And I'm proud to say that I respect the flag of the United States and what the meaning of being an American is. And we need to get behind our government and protect our country. This is our country. If this was an invasion in World War II by the Japanese or the Germans or the Russians, we would have defended our borders no matter what. If they came ashore in Atlantic City or the Pacific Northwest, we would have took up arms, whatever it took, to defend this country. And we need to do that now. Each and every one of us has a responsibility as Americans to protect our country and our people within our country that are here illegally. And Scranton is a centerpiece for all the crossroads going through here. And everybody could just get on an interstate, wind up in Scranton, fly in here. So we have to pay more attention to what's going on around here, but give the support to our police departments and our enforcement people to let them really do their jobs and take the handcuffs off them. And that's what we're doing. We're depressing the people we need to enforce our laws by not protecting them and giving them the tools they need to do their job. And it starts right here. It starts with the council, it starts with the government, it starts with the mayor, it starts with the Commissioners. And it starts here with the people in this city, because this is our town, and we want to protect it. And you did a great job, and I hope the success that's going to come from this building moves us forward in a much more open mind, and people understand that the Commissioners have a job. Are you perfect? Hell, no. But then again, nobody else coming into stories either. You're going to get criticism for what you do, you should get praise for when you do a great job. And for what you've done here, I want to commend you. I was one of the last speakers at the old building. Proud to say I'm standing here at the new building. And keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Yes, good morning. I have to start off with Patrick Williams, Clark Summitt Borough. I've got two hearing aids. One is in Denver, Colorado, being repaired. The battery just went on this one, so I'm having a heck of a time here. But anyway, I want to thank you for allowing me to do the Pledge of Allegiance. That was very nice of you. Just a few things that I want to touch on, being that I'm here. I mentioned a few years ago, the Reinvest Program, where Lackawanna County gave us that sum of money to do Veterans Park and Clark Summit. And I said it then, and I'll say it again, if it wasn't for you guys, with that money, with the Reinvest Program, our project never would have happened. It's very hard raising money, so on and so forth. So again, take a ride through town, the other side, and you'll see how nice it looks. It does require constant maintenance, which is always an effort as you move on up in age, but we want to thank you for that. The other thing is, which I want to mention, is the different programs that the county puts on. For example, the tire recycling. I've been involved with that, and I think it's Barbara G. Navoli.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a fantastic thing that you guys offer the communities. And these tires, when the people, you wonder where they come from, you know? I've had them in my garage, or my mother left them. But anyway, programs like the tire recycling, the e-cycling that you did, those are important things. You need to be thanked for that.
The electronic one is a funny one, because it's actually, it's a state that's supposed to take care of the electronics, the TVs and all that stuff. And we took it on with Barbara G. Navoli, because it's, the people were throwing their TVs on the sides of the road, and we're trying to get at least once, once a year, getting out, getting the municipalities involved. And, you know, I mean, like you said, it's not the county's responsibility, we're picking it up, because it makes the place look like an ice war.
You're absolutely correct. And quite honestly, I've been serving Clark Summitt Borough for 18-plus years. The biggest emphasis that I put on everything is trying to maintain the aesthetics of the borough, which is an issue. You get a lot of, a lot of people will cooperate and a lot won't. This young lady sitting at the end has a beautiful property that she takes care of, and I just want to compliment her, because I never see her, but she does an excellent job. We're proud to have her in Clark Summitt Borough. The other thing is, I was here initially, years ago, when you guys voted to buy this building. I was for it then, I spoke for it, and I am completely, unbelievably impressed with the job you has done. And I was here yesterday for the ribbon cutting, which that was really impressive. So anyway, the best thing about yesterday's presentation was, like my retired father-in-law, the school teacher used to say, be brief and to the point. And that's what yesterday's ribbon cutting was, brief and to the point. Went well, so I'm going to thank you guys, and I appreciate all your time. Thank you, God bless you.
Thank you, Patrick. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. Commissioners of the business?
I'm just, I think I said all I've had to say for the past three days, so I'll get on to more serious issues at the next meeting. I'm going to save those.